First order of business is minutes.
I don't think we have any, do we?
Correspondence. We did get a couple things in. 193 Amherst Street is looking to do, Deer Creek Farm is looking to do a a place for events that coincide with the new bylaw that was passed. You haven't had a chance to read it. The bylaw requires a site plan approval, special permit, so if the board likes, I will contact Kathy tomorrow and let her know that they need to follow up on formal plan and start the special.
We were thinking they have a function last year at that farm. That's the old Kizier Farm.
It's the old Kizier Farm.
It was gonna be a fitness event. I need it.
They want to be able to sell alcohol for the, for wedding.
For you.
That's not that's not in our purview, but I think they have, I think they have to, they either have to have a license or they have to use a licensed caterer in order to do that there.
Okay.
But that's up to the slip point.
Right.
We're more about the site plan and
that meets the bylaws.
That meets the bylaws for this event. Minimum, there's a minimum amount of acreage, I believe they, they have to
submit setbacks, parking.
Parking.
And all, and all other boards approvals, like Board of Directors.
Select Board.
Police.
So I, I think the best thing to do, if everybody's in agreement, is I'll reach back to Kathy and invite them to our next meeting. I'll, I'll let Kathy know that there has to be a special permit issued. There has to be a hearing, let them know that, and then and they're welcome to come to our next meeting to for any other further information. So I'll do that. I think that's all we had. And there's just a note here about the campaign finance report. Back from, back from January 20th, but it doesn't apply, nobody's running it.
What is that?
Yeah, this goes back to January, this was dated.
So I would have to talk about my other man.
Unless he changes mine. Okay.
Jim, you want to come up?
Yeah, we're a little ahead of schedule, but that's okay. We've got, it's all right, we've got the A and R for Lion Street at 5:15.
Oh, 5:15, I thought it was 5:00.
That's all right. What are we doing?
We're all here. I guess we're trying to get rid of some line, that's where we're going.
So what, what exactly is being?
It's a, it's a larger parcel and we're breaking up into house lots.
Oh, so, so all of these?
Yeah, so this one here is gonna be bought by my neighbor Scott Phillyon, so that's why it's only 50 feet here, it's not a big building on.
Well, this is on Harper Street, not Lion Street.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And this one parcel will be a larger, that's what I already got.
Where is the old?
Over here.
Okay, that's what that word, we're going in, okay.
Yeah, those get a little funky because they're curved around the road. There's a total of 150.
Is this the road?
No.
On the corner?
The road's over here.
You know the one I'm talking about with the big rock and everything? Where is this intended for? Shalowsky's. Shalowsky's old place would be down where your left elbow is, would you say, right? So, so you're way up, I'm talking.
Yeah, well, actually Shalowsky's, this was orange one, Shalowsky's would be way down the bottom of the hill. Shalowsky's house is across the street, somewhere's over here. This is the corner that dies on over here. Old bag somewhere over there.
This calls it up. So Scott Phillyon is buying that old triangle?
Fifty, fifty foot triangle. That's why, when Randy did this, he asked me, I said, do not make it lot one because it's not big enough. So it's not really, I guess Parsley is what it's named.
So we changing 12 pieces, 11 lots?
Well, this is a big chance.
Right. Well, we've got 11 lots, is part of it too?
Yes.
So was this property line always here, this one right here, Jim?
No, no.
Okay.
No, this was this, this parcel was here, but it goes farther back here and came up here, so in other words, all what you see here is been put in.
So we've got 12 changes.
12 changes that will be required.
I have no questions.
Neither? Okay.
Okay, the buildability known, it's up there. Okay. Do you have the shorty?
Yes.
Could you explain to me what that buildability means?
It means, it means we don't guarantee that the lot will perk that you can build on it, we just say it meets the, it meets.
Well, we can guarantee that these perk because they are here.
We don't, we don't, we don't care.
If Dick's wife didn't get sick, these would have been done by now.
Would they perk this year, Jim?
These were per question.
These?
Last year, okay.
These are gonna be per 20th or something.
That's good.
Good. I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision of property for J L N properties drawn by Harold Leighton and Associates dated, what is the date? March 27, 2023.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Well, it took you here to get it done.
We've got these.
We've got everything but the check. We gotta go down and see Kathy, what a check.
Oh, okay.
She called me, saying, I got everything, but I didn't get a check, so.
Okay, well, I asked the other way, now what else do I need to do? She's like, I have to call you, but she never asked me.
Want this up in my top first?
Yeah.
Did you say you got this one sold?
This one sold, this one sold.
It's Greg's, so it's still out there.
Yeah, we're trying to get rid of it, but Doug's having a
The last person assigned dated, so we don't smudge it, I was putting my hand over the top of it.
Yeah, it's actually right here.
Where's Greg these days?
New York.
Still in there.
So I talked to Doug because he's closer, and I says, Dr. Brother, need to get it out of there for the triump.
Yeah.
Somebody wants to buy it, so you don't show up yet, so.
I haven't seen Greg since since his mom died.
Signing's always from.
That's what I was asking.
Signing's always part of the process.
That's the wrong way to this one.
Why did it take so long?
Good question. Apparently surveyors are busy. I'm leaving it back. Because it was started April 1st of last year.
Oh, wow.
The surveyors, I don't want to roll and smudge it. So 12 lots, buck and quarter each.
Jay. Over by the water bottle, there's a, roll that up in there.
Oh, this?
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll leave you here. So anyway, this one here, you don't know who it is? He used to work for Spud. Keith Bradley.
Oh, really?
That's one, that's one of the road area, I don't think he was doing one yet.
Oh, oh, I haven't been up that way in a long time.
It's kind of funny, the neighbors committed, we started some trees in there, and they're all like, everybody's gonna ask him, like, well, he technically is putting a road in on my, driveway in on my land, because I just haven't gone through this yet.
Yeah.
So, I'm sure he'll be happy.
Good.
All right, thank you.
Have a good one, Jim. Good luck to you.
Hi, Melissa.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, I'm gonna come sit down there.
Come sit up, right here?
I got it.
Oh. Okay, we're, we're on to 185 West State Street. Has everybody had a chance to review the?
Yes.
Any thoughts?
Boy, that's not the word. We're here for this one, for the owners of Mr. Aller.
So are we discussing the food truck portion or just the vehicle portion?
Is Jason Aller here?
Yes.
That's Jason. Jason, are you here for a site plan?
Just for a site plan approval.
This must be. Okay, okay.
So is this for two separate businesses or for just one business?
Two separate.
Okay.
All right, so here, here's we've got two things before us that are gonna coincide with each other on the, on the site.
Want to have Jason go first?
Well, let me just think about this for a minute. Yeah, I think, yeah, go ahead, Jason, why don't you tell us what you're, what you're thinking about doing?
So basically, the idea is very small import dealership, not like, you know, typical used car dealer, I'm not looking at cars of wear, you know, trucks and vans and flags and bears and all that, these cars are 25-year-old antiques or older, they're small cars, four by ten usually, they don't take up a lot of room, they're very unique. Have a nice car look at rather than drive by seeing the typical Chevy trucks and boards and all that stuff, they're kind of neat, a lot of people I'm sure look at this, oh, that's pretty interesting, I'll put a couple pictures in there of a few examples of what they look like. Yeah, I'm not looking, I know Craig is a small town, got a small town vibe, so I'm certainly not trying to break to bring a used car dealer vibe to it, it would be maybe a few cars, we ask for a lot of tangible spaces for cars, whatever we think is good. But it would be no retail signs, no screeners, none of that stuff, so it wouldn't be like this catty looking thing to drive by. There's a retail shop that I'm also leasing that's part of that, so they're gonna have a professional space to do my business and whatnot. Buying the dealer's license to do everything the right way. I'll also supply new parts to the people that look to buy these cars, so I can have their stuff for them. Not gonna have a big store, but I'll be able to provide everything they need for the cars that they purchase. So kind of a small operation, ask for maybe 10 cars at most. Again, it would be a pretty small section of the land because they're pretty small, I don't think I'll have much space. That's a general idea, just a very small antique used import car.
What about service, you planning on doing any service there?
For service, I don't plan on doing any servicing there, I plan on, if I need to do service of vehicles, I would truck them or I would just drive them. I actually run Kurayama, that's my store, I've been there 30 years, and I have plenty of kids and I have space there to do what I need if I need to. But yeah, I wouldn't, they wouldn't really want me doing anything on the property anyway, and I wouldn't want to do that.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
And you, and you wanted to explain to me what you're, what you're trying to do there?
So Jason approached us and, you know, I'm sure you're familiar with the Chateau Harmony, it's, you know, rustic, you know, small town vibe there, as Jason said, and when he approached us, you know, right away I said, first off, you know, I don't want banners, I don't want signs, I don't want stickers in the windows, low mileage, great deal, none of that. And I told him I didn't want any service thing of any vehicles or maintenance or repairs on the property, and I didn't want any storage hazardous material, oil, gasoline, none of that. He has a small unit, I think it's like 610 square feet, 700 feet. So it's, you know, set up for a desk and an office space where you can sign contracts, store the documents, and a small section of that space you could use for, you know, parts. And that's, that's what we have approved him for, and, you know, I was impressed when Jason first approached us and, you know, would like to do a car dealership, I don't know about that, and Jason wrote us a nice email, introduced himself to us, and then we asked for his data, he's a good meeting person, Jason's very accommodating, met at the property and good family man who's in Belge Town where we live, local guy, and we got a great connection and nowadays to find somebody that's been employed for more than a year or two at the same place is pretty unbelievable, this guy's been there for 30 years, like that.
Okay, now, is, is, to change, change this up a little bit, is this you that's trying to do the farmer's market and?
That's
Is that you or another tenant?
No, my wife and I would like to discuss how we proceed with that type of event structure moving forward.
So it's basically food trucks and, and?
Well, we're talking about maybe doing a farmer's market, you know, weekly farmer's market, my wife and I have been involved in the the fair and, you know, craft festival business for, you know, most of my life. So we bring a lot to the table with that, and we think that's a great property to, you know, stop local traffic coming by and bring more eyes to the property, you know, help our consistent tenants, we have eight or nine tenants on the property, and, you know, make their businesses flourish, I think it's great to stop people. It's a great property, a lot of road frontage, big parking lot. That was our vision when we bought the property. And, you know, these are things of, you know, we want to do, you know, we're not in huge rush to do things, you know, we thought it'd be great if a food truck come by and, you know, have tacos one day, next day, burgers and fries, next day, you know, Italian subs, who knows? But we don't know how to proceed, and, you know, after we're done with Jason, our question's to you, how do we move forward with those things, site plans, permits? That's what we're asking.
Go ahead, anybody from the board have any questions for him?
I, I guess my question is, where were you proposed on the property to have food trucks?
So, looking at, can you turn that around? So I, what we wanted to do was put, and when we say food trucks, we're not talking having a food truck Friday, 30 vehicles on the property.
Okay.
We thought, you know, one truck, when we do a farmer's market or a Friday night, not Friday night because the building closes at 5 o'clock, but you know, Fridays, Saturdays, visitor days, we would like to possibly see it at the back of that picture. Yes, somewhere along the tree line, yep, so it's visible from the road, lots of parking, people can come in, and that was our goal. That red area in the front is where we're planning to have Jason park his vehicles.
There's a lot of parking there, I've never seen it completely full ever.
And we're working with the Conservation Commission to see, you know, where we can, there are some trees, we're painting a parking lot, parking lot is it was all parking at one point.
You plan on keeping it a dirt parking lot?
Hundred percent. Yes, somebody wants to hand you that, call 100,000. Yes, definitely grass and natural, or grass and gravel.
Anybody else have any comments or thoughts?
I mean, the only thing I, I guess my, my thought is, you know, part, like Kevin's barn gets so busy, you know? How many cars do you think you get from Kevin's barn on the weekend, like, there's quite a few.
You know, Kevin's, you know, is definitely the major draw on the property.
Right.
And he gets, I don't know, I've never really done a count, but the parking lot, since we've owned it, I've never seen it full.
Okay.
Like, not even close to being full, like, people mostly park on the asphalt, and then once that's full, they move over to the gravel. People want to walk on the gravel, but there's a tremendous amount of parking there.
Okay. How many spots do you think you have?
Parking?
Yes.
Well, we're looking at 10 across the front, so 20, maybe 30, both sides, 60, and then double on the other side. On the, on the gravel, at least 120 spots. On the asphalt, in front of the smaller building, I think we can fit 10 vehicles there behind the building. We have the people park, there's probably eight there, so that's 18. Another 10, 20, 30, 40, so I bet you can fit 150, 160 vehicles on the property as it is today.
Okay. So, so we're talking a farmer's market, not a flea market?
No, I don't want to have a flea one, what we, what we would like to do is have a weekly farmer's market where local people can come and sell their apples and other crops that they grow, fresh eggs, whatever it is they have. In addition to that, we would like to do basically what the town's doing at Kellaw Ball next month, we'd like to have, you know, maybe bimonthly, some type of vendor and craft fair.
That's not the town, that's a private.
Oh, is it? Oh, it's the Kellaw Ball.
Yeah.
Yeah, so something similar to that, like a craft fair.
Anybody else have anything?
That's great.
Okay, so here's, here's my take on this.
Sure.
Let us check the bylaws and see what we see, whether or not you need a full site plan approval.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
I think both operations would be a great idea. This board is pretty business friendly, we think it's good to generate, it helps other businesses, and it's, it's it's a win-win all the way around, I think. I do think I would like to get, if we, we'll check the bylaws and see what the, what the the process is, if it's not required for a full site plan, the only, the only thing I would like to do is probably ask that you show the parking situation, where the car, the, the
I think that's off the picture there, that's.
It is, but I think I'd like to see, you know, how the parking and how all that would be demonstrated
Sure.
on the plan. And then, because I'd like to run this by the police and fire.
Sure.
To see if they have any issues with access and, you know, traffic in and out of here, if it I'm hoping it's gonna be so busy that we'll have to put a light up.
See, I mean.
You know what I'm saying, we want to make sure that they, you know, there's, there's a good there's any concerns from.
And just so, I don't know if you're aware, we have actually three entrance and exits to that property as far as vehicles go. And, you know, just to, to be clear here, our priority is Jason.
Okay.
That's, like, he's anxious to move forward, we love to have him as a tenant, the other thing The other things we just presented, those are, we're just looking for guidance how to move forward. What I'd like to start tomorrow, 100%, but I want to, you know, follow your lead. You tell us how to proceed, what we need to do, site plans, permits. We just, we've never done it, so we don't know.
I would almost think that it'd be best to have the, you know, craft fair, food trucks, et cetera, in the backyard. I know it's not visible from the street, but at least it's like flat, and then you have all this parking.
Sure. We thought about that initially, I was a little concerned with some of the tenants that operate that back part of the property.
Okay.
That's kind of where their customers park.
I see.
But we, I can do a visual for you if that's what you're looking for.
Let us check into the bylaws that this, because not everything falls under a nice neat package under the bylaws, what's allowed and what isn't allowed.
Sure.
Or what requires a site plan approval and what requires a special permit. So let us double check on that. And if it's just a straight-up site plan, then versus a special permit, then we could sit down and have an informal conversation.
Sure.
Talk about logistics a little bit, in a little bit more detail with a plan. You know, you may want to do, because you've got so many access points to the property, you may want to, you know, look at and say, one way in and one way out or something along those lines to help.
Just so you know, I like to talk, but my wife Marilyn is actually a big boss here. She's all the time.
We're just excited to be here. This has been like a really awesome experience for us so far. We love the building and we love town. I've been coming to Western Mass and Belchertown since I was a kid. I grew up in Long Island, I went to a camp in Belchertown, and we decided to move here and be here with the community.
We're glad you're here and we're glad you're looking to do things here.
Yeah, we're actually, thank you so much.
But just let us check to make sure that we're following the process for these particular uses.
Okay.
And we'll move it along. What I'll do is, I'll talk to our consultant that we use from Pioneer Valley, have him review the bylaws, and then once he gets back to us, we'll get back to you, have you back here and be able to give you some more information.
What do we do with Jason versus?
I'm going to have him do the same thing for that, both pieces.
Gotcha.
So you're checking for us and what we want to do here, but as far as you just said?
Both, we're going to review both and see how the bylaws apply
Right.
to that zone, to those uses, and...
So in the bylaws, does it say that it's just site plan approval for?
That's what we're going to double check, whether it's site plan approvable, or a special permit is required, and then we have to have a hearing.
Okay.
So let us do our homework so that we can make the process a little bit, as smooth as possible as we can.
Typically, our liaison from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, who the town, we hire, is with us on meeting night. He unfortunately is not feeling well.
Sure.
Hence, Ken, what do you think?
And that may not, and sometimes we don't get a complete answer from him until we do some more research on it too. So let us do our homework and we'll get back to you. We'll try to expedite this as quickly as we can.
That's great.
I have one other thing. Jason, have you been to the select board regarding a, what is it, Class B?
Yeah.
Class two?
Class two license?
Class two license?
Yeah, I handed in all my data to her, but I just think this was...
They won't issue a license until we tell them how many cars he can have.
I didn't know if there was one available or if you at least made that approach, okay.
Yeah, I think there is one available from my herd. But as far as, this is the first step, so.
Sure.
Yeah, as soon as I know it's bonded, then I think we'll work on that.
Okay, great, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to everything.
All right, thanks for letting me by.
Have a good night.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay. That's it?
Yep, thank you.
Have a good night. So...
Oh, hi.
So we discussed this, let me see.
Are they all together?
What's that?
I said, are they all together?
I think so.
What can we do for you to see?
Well, I was here a couple years ago before COVID. I want to build a garage, a house garage.
I'm sorry, Steve.
I want to build a garage on a house. And I've built a separate building, 1,200 square feet.
Mm-hmm. What size building?
1,200. 1,200.
You don't need to be here for that. 1,200 square feet is the threshold. 1,200 feet or more, you need a special permit.
Oh, so I don't have to need a permit?
You do need a building permit.
Right, right.
That's it.
Well, I was here last night to get told I needed a, or a block then, sorry.
Well, you know what, that could have been pre-COVID. Didn't we have that bylaw in that it was only 1,000 square feet? And then we changed the bylaw? Was it 1,200?
That doesn't sound familiar.
What was it, Roy Day? Roy Day, the designer, the architect? Yeah, Proco.
Sure.
I got a pop in to a surveyor from over a few weeks ago. Surveyor, he sat back and I'm like...
So you're probably going to need that sort of permit, but you, as long as you're under that, 1,200 or under, you're good.
Okay, perfect.
Great.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Are we all set?
I just want to bring Melissa up to date on the first, the Amherst Street.
Oh. Nita, did you see that as well?
Amherst Street, did we talk about that last night?
No, we, I don't know about that one, that wasn't there.
I don't think this is new.
Okay. I mean, if they're hiring tip-certified bartenders, outside bartenders.
As long as you're licensed.
As long as you're licensed, and I have no problem with a two-day liquor license.
So again, that's not in our purview. Our purview is, we just changed the bylaw to allow this.
Yeah.
But it's by special permit.
Right.
So we have to, so basically, I was going to fill them in
Yep.
through Kathy, let them know that it's going to require a special permit and that they're welcome to come here for any consultation that we can give them on the process. But they're going to have to, they're going to have to file
Okay.
do the paperwork and then...
Okay.
Special permit against anything, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So it's...
I didn't think they needed a special permit. They do.
Can we show that to Nita, please?
Yeah, because we want to make sure it's a... I'll double check, but I'm pretty sure it's a special permit.
Yeah, no, we didn't.
Because we have to have a hearing to notify the neighbors.
Oh, they're having events.
Otherwise, it wouldn't be as...
Yeah. We were talking about that, maybe maybe some rules around that. Last day when this came about, I felt that they didn't have to have a special permit. Yeah, I thought that's...
Double check the bylaws.
Okay.
We'll do that too, but either way, it's going to...
Because that went to the special, that went to town meeting.
Correct.
Because I was there at that town meeting.
Right.
But I think it allowed it, but I think it's still required. I don't know.
Yeah, let's figure that out, because I thought that it was, it didn't need a special permit anymore. It just needed that one day, like the application.
I'll have Ken review that.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Good for them. They're good people.
Yeah, I don't know who they are, but I'm all for it, so.
Yep.
Any other discussion? I'm not going to get into the cannabis thing without Ken.
Without Ken, no.
So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sounds great.
I'm needing a motion to adjourn.
Second? There's a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.